Welcome to May 14, 2019, City Council Meeting at Hazel Park. Roll call, please.
Mayor West.
Here.
Mayor Prost and Aubrey.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember LaFiora.
Here.
Councilmember Holland.
Here.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
And let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for the blessing of this day. We thank you for this opportunity that the business of this great city is conducted with wisdom and strength and with the concern that there's safety, that there's life and health for our families. Thank you for your sense of protection for our first responders, firefighters, police, and then protection over the lives of our council members and city administration. Thank you for making our city great with the presence of your power and grace. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen.
And then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Council, approval of the agenda with the changes adding number three to the proclamations.
I move approval of the revised agenda, Ms. Claire.
Support.
Any dissension, any discussion? We have an agenda. Brings us to the special presentation's Resolution 5-011-19, National Police Week. It's a big resolution. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15 falls National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others and whereas members of law enforcement deserve the appreciation and respect for the people of Hazel Park for their merit, dignity, bravery, reliability, and exhibit each other every day, we must also honor the sacrifices made by families of police officers as each day they must face constant fear as their loved ones go to protect us. And whereas in 2018 alone, 163 law enforcement officers were killed and many, many more assaulted in the line of duty across the country. The names of these dedicated public servants who made the ultimate sacrifice are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas Hazel Park's fallen officers will never be forgotten, nor will their service to their respective communities. By choosing to commit themselves to law enforcement, these brave individuals answered the call for service and willingly put their lives in jeopardy. Whereas the city of Hazel Park and all Michigan citizens have turned to members of law enforcement for assistance and support in times of distress, whether they are coping with a personal crisis or struggling through civil discord or a natural disaster. Our communities rely on the courageous individuals when it's difficult to stand on their own and we are indebted to the unwavering public service of our local and state police. Therefore, be it resolved, the City Hazel Park, City Council of Hazel Park declares May 12 through 18, 2019, a Police Week. Thank you. Stand with the holders of the hand. Police Chief.
Mr. Mayor, while Chief Buchholz is making his way up to the podium to receive the resolution, I just want to thank him and the dedicated members of our police department for the outstanding work that they do on a daily basis, keeping the city of Hazel Park safe.
You want me to do this one? Sure, knock yourself out. That was a little long-winded.
Is Laura Mohammed in the audience?
Yeah.
Hi, Laura, come on up. Mayor, why don't you go down to the podium and make the presentation while I'm reading? Come on up. A proclamation honoring Laura Mohammed. Whereas Ms. Laura Mohammed, currently a teacher at Webster Early Childhood Center in Hazel Park, previously serving as the Director of the Cranbrook Children's Center in Washington Township, has been working in the early childhood education profession since she was 16 years of age. And whereas Laura has been providing the highest quality of early childhood learning as the lead educator for the Great Start Readiness Program in Hazel Park, displaying her love and passion for teaching with an extraordinary and eclectic teaching approach in a program that aims to bridge the gap between home life and school. And whereas Laura's unique style of teaching at the GSRP program is tailored according to the needs of her students, designing classroom curriculum in various approaches, helping students learn how to socialize with peers, including sharing readiness skills, problem-solving, and developing trusting relationships with teachers. And whereas, after being nominated by her peers, Laura received a prestigious statewide award in partnership with the Detroit Pistons, the 2019 Excellence in High Quality Early Child Education Award from the High Scope Education Research Foundation and the Michigan Association for the Education of the Young Child. So therefore, be it resolved, the Hazel Park City Council hereby honors Ms. Laura Mohammed for her efforts and service to education to the students and parents of Hazel Park. We extend our best wishes to her as she furthers herself professionally. Thank you for your outstanding accomplishment.
Thank you so much.
Laura, don't run away yet. You're very special to me. You are the mentor to my sister and I want to thank you personally and I have something for you.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Bad weekend. Bad week.
Okay, we got a proclamation honoring Pride Month of 2019. Whereas the city of Hazel Park supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination and whereas we celebrate the value and rich diversity of persons in our community, including the many unique talents, viewpoints, backgrounds, and cultural heritages in our citizens. And whereas while we, as a society at large, are solely embracing new definitions of sexuality, gender, and we was also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to the end of discrimination and prejudice. And therefore, be it resolved, the mayor of City Hazel Park, City Council, and recognize and declare 2019 as Pride Month in the city of Hazel Park, Michigan, and encourage our residents to reflect on the outgoing struggle of equality members of the LGBTQ community faced with and celebrate the contributions that enhance our city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, could I get a motion and a support to actually approve all those three resolutions? Usually we just sign them, but we really should.
There are resolutions, approve them. Motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the National Police Week Resolution, the Proclamation honoring Laura Mohammed, and the Resolution naming, is that June or May?
June.
June, Pride Month, 2019.
Support.
Any more discussion, dissension? Motion passes. Moves to civic announcements. We have our County Commissioner Helene Zach here. Would she like to come up?
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Couple of things. I serve on the Board of SEMCOG and they are doing an initiative which is walkbikedrivesafe.org. And I have some different posters for you, some brochures. There was legislation that was passed that for bike safety in the state that says that you're supposed to move over three feet from bicycle riders. There's been, with more different types of mobility, people riding bikes, there's been more accidents. So they are trying to make people more aware of safety issues. So there's brochures and there's a website, walkbikedrivesafe.org, to look at. Bunch of different things going on in the county. We did vote to increase our 911 surcharge on all of our telephones. The price, every phone, it's going up from 36 cents to 42 cents per year. And what we are doing with that is that, you know, this is the highest that I can approve as County Commissioner. We are still in the process of changing over our emergency response system. And we are going from the old copper landlines that Michigan Bell put in years ago into the most sophisticated internet technology. And there's obviously a cost in doing that. We will be replacing equipment here in Hazel Park. There will be interoperability with the state with this new system, lots of wonderful safety issues, and so that will be increasing. We still don't know all of the money that we're going to get from the state, but you know, as far as how much we will have to bond out in the future for the system, but this helps us a little bit. Any questions about that? It's never fun to vote for a raise. I do want to let you, remind people that we do offer these Live Healthy Oakland Discount Cards. So for those people that don't have wonderful medical insurance or prescription insurance, there are these cards that you can take to different drugstores and get some discount on medication. Or if your insurance doesn't cover a particular medication that you need, you can use, maybe you can use this card to get a discount. There's also discounted dental plans available. And to find out more information, you can go to the Oakland County website, www.oakgov.com/livehealthyoakland. Or you can go to the, under the Board of Commissioners, we have a link. Other things going on, like your city, we have created a county complete count committee to work on the census and I clearly said to them, we're going to be coordinating with the cities, you know, working with the clerk. We all need to work together for this important count. I am pleased to say that we did a resolution, a proclamation, making Oakland County a welcoming county, that we welcome everybody here, make them feel comfortable. I was touched by how many heartfelt stories I heard from residents of Oakland County thanking us and emails for creating this wonderful environment. Finally, the ORV, the Off-Road Vehicle Park, continues to move forward and they are targeting probably somewhere around 2020 to have this live. And this will be out at Grove Land and Holly Townships, run in conjunction with the state and Oakland County Parks. And I know that they, this will be the closest rec, off-road vehicle park to Oakland County to have one there. I know that people have to travel up north or other places, so that's coming. So that's it this evening.
Any questions?
Thank you, Helene.
Don't leave, Helene. I'm really happy there's so many people here today because you guys all get to hear this. I just want to congratulate Commissioner Zach. She's being honored by the Area Agency on Aging for her volunteer leadership award. So just wanted to thank you for your commitment to the community and your district.
Thank you. I was honored Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Any other civic announcements from the audience? Any civic announcements? Lois?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lois Bridle. I'm Chairman of the Hazel Park Neighborhood and Richmond. And we've only been in existence 24 years, in case you didn't know how a volunteer looks like after 24 years. I'm here to invite you to be part of a citywide garage sale. Last year, we did such a great job that the two volunteers, my Lee and Sandy, raise your hand now, they said they'd do it again.
Lois, can you speak into the microphone so everybody at TV can hear you?
Lee and Sandy, who just stood up, were our volunteers that ran it last year with the help from a few other people, and it was great. They did such a great job again, they're doing it again this year. And we hope that all of you will be getting your rummage, shall we say, extra furniture, extra stuff, out and put it in your yard, not only to have, get rid of a few things, but also go around to many of your neighbors and friends and pick up some good things. Last year, I had a ball. I got a dollhouse and a basketball hoop for my grandkids. Plus, I had fun meeting my neighbors all over the city. The next thing is our Hazel Park Beautification Award. That is going to be starting in June and that's where we go out and put signs in different yards to just show how nice they look. And it's up to the person that's giving the sign out what's best about the house. It could be it just looked pretty, it could be it's fabulous, it could be it's just a good Hazel Park house. Plus, we have a great little city here and after visiting busy Boston for four days last week, I am so happy to be back to Hazel Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lois.
Any other civic announcements?
Thank you, Council. So I believe tonight you guys are reviewing an application for the Hazel Park Arts Council.
Rick, please state your name.
Oh, Richard Gage. All right, thank you. So anyways, so you're reviewing this application for Mara, Mara, Marosi Leitner, sorry, sorry, I was a tongue twister. Anyways, she couldn't be here tonight for personal reasons, so I'm here for her benefit. So, you know, I imagine it's kind of like a rubber stamp to just accept new members into committees, but I think it's important to share a bit about why Mara might be a great addition. She's not only a resident, but a professional artist using photography as a basis for her work. Mara's an art educator at SCS in Detroit, SC Art Based Educational Junior and Senior High School on the CCS Toddman Campus. Additionally, she holds an MA in Arts Administration from SCAD, which is the South Carolina Design School, very prominent school, and a BFA in Photography and Art Education from CCS. So Mara's already volunteered and contributed, will be a great asset to all the art initiatives in the city, so I hope you approve her application. And it's her birthday, so happy birthday, Mara.
Thank you.
Didn't you have something going on this weekend?
Last weekend.
That was last weekend.
Really?
You missed it, Andy.
I have it set in my calendar for this weekend.
It was a fun time.
You're on.
A lot of people came, about 30 people came and had their tools fixed and met some neighbors and did some other fun stuff and kind of gardening related and community building. Thank you.
Richard, one of my neighbors was more fascinated with the chickens.
And there were chickens, yeah. Yep, there were chickens.
I would just like to add that I had a chance to meet Mara and she is one of our judges for the photo contest that we're hoping to wrap up soon, all the events, and then one of our judges having an illness, kind of put that on hold. But Mara's what an amazing talent, she'll be a huge asset.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other civic announcements? Anyone want to come up and speak, give announcement for anything going on in the city? Announcements, question of? Why don't you ever come up? Do you want to come up and ask the question? Under public discussion. I'll just let you come up under public discussion. The next, we'll close the civic announcements to the public council. We'll start over here.
Yes, I do. This weekend is the annual Pet Vaccination Clinic and I just want to remind everyone, it is not, not, not going to be at the DPW. We will be holding this at All About Animals, who are our vet partner with this service. Reduce costs for pets. All that's required for your pet licensing is a rabies vaccination. However, they will have rabies and distemper for $10 each. And then all of the other vaccinations that you'd normally get, I know that there's been a big discussion about lepto because of rats and other wild animals that is available. I don't know the cost on that because they have packages that they offer. Animal Control, the ACO will be there, for those of you that haven't met, our new ACO, Jennifer. This is a great opportunity to, in a very, it's going to be a lot of barking, I'm sure, going on, but a pretty calm setting where you can ask questions if you have specific issues or concerns going on with pets in the community. And also, if you come to this clinic, you can get your licenses there, reduce cost, and we're also selling T-shirts to help with a fundraiser. I brought one with me and it fell, of course. And this is not my size. They're only $10 each and all the funds go right back in to help with the emergency medical for the animals that come through. So hopefully, we'll see folks out. The weather's going to be great. It's a great facility and if folks are not aware of All About Animals, this is a low-cost wellness center. You don't have to go to a regular vet and spend $300 to get your pet preventatives and regular treatments. This is an amazing option and I hope to see the community come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next Monday, May 20, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., there's going to be a Senior Services Summit. I happen to be the most senior guy up here, member up here. This is going to be held in Berkeley at the schools, Berkeley High School Collaborative Center. What this is, this is, there are special guests, our State Representative Robert Wittenberg and Attorney General Dana Nessel. Attorney General Dana Nessel has put together an Elder Abuse Task Force and she has information about that. There will be a lot of different organizations at this, the Area Agency on Aging, One B, Jewish Senior Life, Oakland County Housing Network, Adult Protective Services, Oakland McComb Disability Network, and Alzheimer's Association, the Postal Inspector. They'll talk to people about getting, you know, preventing themselves being taken advantage of in scams, internet scams and things like, a whole lot of things. This again is the Senior Services Sunday, Senior Services Summit, and it's on Monday, May 20 in Berkeley. Can we get this put on cable? Thank you.
So excited that we were able to introduce the proclamation honoring June as Pride Month for 2019. To go along with that, we will have a flag raising ceremony hosted by downtown Hazel Park outside City Hall. That is going to be Saturday, June 1, 2019, at 10 a.m. State Representative Robert Wittenberg will be joining us, as well as State Senator Jeremy Moss, and that is to raise the pride flag for the month of June, so hopefully we'll see some of you guys there.
I also have an announcement. Letito, Joe Barr, is hosting WDET, Detroit's NPR Smart Politics, this Thursday, so two days away. May 16, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., discussion will be had. It's kind of in preparation of the annual Mackinac Policy Conference, so the goal is to have drinks and smart conversations about politics, policies, news, and issues in our community. It's free to attend, it's open to anyone, not just Hazel Park residents. Again, Letito at Joe Barr is located at 23829 John R. Road, and it is this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I wanted to let everybody know that there's a parade route change for Memorial Day Weekend, for the Memorial Day Parade. It will be, thank you. It will be starting at the Hazel Park Junior High, coming down Nine Mile, proceeding up John R. at that point to Woodward Heights and over to the Hazel Park Rec Center. And there's going to be, starting our fair on Thursday, before Memorial Day Weekend, all through the weekend, so get your tickets early. Hopefully, we have no rain and we have a successful event. And we want to see everybody out there on the parade route. And leave us, any other change anymore?
No, but we should remind the people, the reason why we have a shortened parade route this year is because construction is beginning on May 16 for the South John R. Resurfacing Project. I know that, you know, nobody thinks we need to do that, but, so that's going to get done starting May 16. So obviously, we can't march in a construction area, so we've had to shorten the parade route this year. So please come on.
I got a few customers that would like to see smoother roads. Their outlets are a little lighter.
I think just a few. I said that facetiously, it's long overdue.
And after that, they're continuing to North John R. as well.
Yep.
And over to Nine Mile, and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have probably the best roads in South Oakland County, if not Oakland County.
Yeah, we just did the, what I hope is my last due diligence phone call for the issuance of the bonds to fund the rest of the road construction program. And that process is ongoing and underway and proceeding accordingly. And, you know, barring contractor unavailability, we will be doing North John R. and Nine Mile this year.
And I hope that everybody got a chance to see Channel 2 this evening with the announcement of the new facility on John R. where the old, the old CVS was, that's been dormant for 10 years, or as someone called it, a wart on Channel 2.
It is what it is.
Of our city. And it's exciting new news. We've been working on this for a very long time. Mr. Klowitscher and his staff's been working diligently trying to get this through. Finally got the concessions in which is needed and some brownfield tip of money to change things around.
Yep.
Road redevelopment. And I believe that that's going to be the game changer of our community. The game changer means, once this, we already got a couple of cool restaurants and we've been working on all these other projects, the new roads, new additional businesses, new living areas, it's going to grow and expand from there. We want to make sure that we do it the Hazel Parkway. Not Royal Oak, not Ferndale, we're doing it our way, still having that bedroom home community area, but we just want to add that walkable, fun zone that we can still have and be close to home. And I think that changes our, ends our civic announcements, does have public discussion. Anyone, see, I got three papers up here. Chase Brown, Eagle Scout Project Donation. For the record, Jimmy, it's 23089 Batel Avenue. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Not too bad, welcome. Just speaking into the microphone there.
All right, sorry about that. As I finished my Eagle Scout Project, it was a flag retirement box over the city of Hazel Park.
Great.
Which is at this hometown memorial, ice arena, and a rec center. And I have like leftover funds I would like to donate to the city of Hazel Park.
Wow, thank you. Any particular, any particular purpose for those donations you'd like to see?
Back to the city. Hopefully more improvements to the city parks.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's an accomplishment.
Mr. Mayor, becoming an Eagle Scout is a huge accomplishment, so. And I will give it to the city clerk, so I don't lose it.
Congratulations.
And then we have Darlene Snoggin-Hunsley, Shawna C., 1122 East Granite Avenue. There you are.
Hey, I'm with Hazel Park Neighborhood and Richmond.
Let's see the address.
Oh, I got to do it again? Okay, my name is Darlene Shawna C. Address is 1122 East Granite Avenue. Ask a question. I understand we're going to get new flower pots in the downtown area next year. We've been invited to put some input in on it. I need to know your budget. I need to know your budget. I'll park it. Remember, I have expensive taste.
You may, we may not. Why don't we sit down and see what you've picked out? Okay?
I haven't quite done that yet, so for the budget.
Yeah, I can't give you that yet until we... Yeah, we need to take a look at that, because we're going to be bringing some money over for land care and things like that, so I would like to look at and see what you guys want, and then make that aspirational.
Well, I can tell you...
I'm thinking in the, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, finish your thought.
No, we're thinking in, you know, probably a few thousand dollars.
A few thousand dollars, okay. The older ones that we have right now, the modern circle ones, I think those ran between $300 and $600.
Yeah, okay.
Is that too expensive?
No. Depends on how many you want, but...
I'll be looking for more durability and...
Yeah, I'm looking for something, too, that won't be dangerous if we put it out on the road. If you hit one of those other concrete ones, it's lights out.
I think maybe, instead of diamonds, we use rhinestones. I think it's a proper amount of money to spend on these.
Yeah. Something, something nice and tasteful, but something that's not super-heavy and difficult to maneuver.
Okay.
So I'm thinking like...
Thank you, Darlene, for all your help.
You're welcome.
Couple thousand bucks, maybe.
Hi, I'm Lee McLoughlin, 23029 Stauber. I am here with the Hazel Park Historical Commission, and I prepared a statement. I'd like to respond to the motion that was made by Councilwoman Sullivan at the city council meeting in April. The motion was to suspend the activities of the Hazel Park Historical Commission. Further, the following statement was made, which has been transcribed word-for-word, quote, "Another concern that I had, which was part of the reason I made a motion to suspend, was I know that we had asked for, or the city had asked for, an inventory. And in the ordinance, as it does stipulate, that an inventory is to be done, when that was asked for, the city manager was informed that most of the belongings were privately owned, and that as a concern, as a historical commission, that these things might leave the building. I consider myself a reasonable person. So as a reasonable person, I asked six people to read that statement. These people ranged from physicians to housekeepers, and every single one of them said essentially the same thing. And that was the person making the statement was concerned that someone was going to steal something. Rastasured to remain impartial, none of the people I asked knew that I was on the commission. If six people with varying backgrounds and levels of education can all glean the same impression from an isolated part of text, how can you deny that insinuating the commission members would misappropriate museum artifacts was what you meant? If not the commissioners, who did you mean? The public? Because you meant someone. So who is it? If you are so concerned about, I'm sure the residents of the city would love to know. Beyond that, an apology is owed. We are volunteers. We cleaned out that building, we fixed the things that were broken, we bought the appliances, cases, kitchen furnishings, et cetera, much with our own money, and the public should know that. When they come to the museum to reminisce over old pictures, coffee, and lunch, it was us who provided it. And that's earned us some respect from the city. Barring that, the minimum of good manners should be practiced, especially in front of the entire town. The embarrassment and humiliation we all felt was like a sharp knife in the back after all our hard work. No volunteer in this city deserves to be treated in the manner with which we were treated last month. Any other city would be proud of a historical commission that has gone to the lengths that we have gone to create and maintain what we hope will be a city treasure, much like our library, rec center, and ice arena. Your behavior was inappropriate and unbecoming of a city council person, and we're sorely disappointed in you. Thank you."
Thank you. Anyone else from public discussion? Closing public discussion. All right, Chuck?
Chuck Ladue 339, West George, I'm here on behalf of the Hazel Park Lions Club this evening, and I'm asking for a legal opinion from the city attorney regarding city council members serving alcohol at the refreshment tent over Memorial Day weekend. It's been a long-held belief that they were unable to due to liability issues, and I want to point out that the tent is solely run by the Hazel Park Lions Club, and we provide our own bonds, insurance, and liquor license. So therefore, we'd like the city attorney to render a legal opinion, excuse me, opinion as to whether the city council members are able to do that. I believe you, do you get a copy of this?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I address that?
In a second. Anyone else, public discussion? Closing public discussion. Yes, you may respond.
All right. The key, the key here is, first and foremost, I cannot give legal opinions to private citizens or clubs. I am the Hazel Park City Attorney and Prosecuting Attorney. The legal opinion that I hold is that the Honorable Mayor and the members of the city council shall not participate in serving any alcohol at functions. This function, the key terms here, is that the Lions are going to hold the liquor license. The Lions are going to be obtaining the bonds and necessary insurance, and this is a Lion-sponsored function. It is absolutely, my opinion, as a city attorney on behalf of my council and mayor, that they shall not serve any alcohol at any of these functions, period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moves us on to... Consent Agenda. Yeah, I lost my glasses, man. Wrong pocket. Counsel, we get approval of the consent agenda as presented?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor, of items 1 through 11 on the consent agenda.
Support.
Any discussion? Dissension? Consent Agenda passes. Anyone on the consent agenda here, any businesses or anything, they would like to come up and make a notification? Seeing no one, takes us to administrative reports.
Mr. Mayor, I'll defer to City Attorney Melissa Schwartz on these ordinances. She's done some additional research and made some modifications. I believe that she gave all of you a cover letter explaining those modifications and the justifications for those modifications, and if she has anything else to add, I will allow her to do so.
Counsel, it will be your pleasure on items 1, 2, and, doing 1, 2, and 3 together?
You may, if that is your pleasure, sir.
I think that's probably the best way to go about this. Items 1, 2, and 3. City Attorney, would you like to make any comments?
Not at this time, but I'm available for any questions whatsoever. I did want to just address, there was some concerns about the civil infractions versus misdemeanors. And there is differences between whether it is a user, or whether it is someone attempting or who has successfully sold to a minor. So I think that that was very important to clarify for the Honorable Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you. Items 1 and 2, Counsel, items 3 is a fireworks ordinance, sorry.
Your Honor, I did have one question. I've read through this, and if I've missed it, I, oh, I'm sorry.
We need a motion to start for discussion. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of items, administrative report items, 1 and 2.
Support.
Okay, we open up for discussion.
Okay, sorry, allergies, I'm feeling a little underwater right now.
Counselperson, how?
Yep. The, the public use, I know that we've discussed and had presentations on possible public, like the Hash Bash in Ann Arbor, this doesn't affect that at all, does it?
No.
No, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be by permit only.
Thank you.
Yes.
I thought I was remembering that, but it wasn't in front of me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, if you're under 18, you wouldn't be there. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Any dissension? Hearing none? Items 1 and 2 passes. Items 3, the fireworks upgraded ordinance definitions to eliminate the term "national holiday" to amend ignition, discharge, and use of consumer fireworks, and to amend penalty of violations of this ordinance pursuant to the amended Michigan Fireworks Act. First reading. City Attorney, any comments on this?
I think that this is an excellent job that Jeff Campbell did, and I think that it's going to make a lot of residents in the city very, very happy. So, very good work, Jeff.
Yeah, so again, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo Melissa Schwartz's praise of Mr. Campbell in this. He is also not just our community development director, but he is a licensed attorney, and he's our deputy city attorney, and he drafted this, and this will give us some more enforcement options for fireworks, which I think is sorely lacking, so...
I move approval of the amendment to our fireworks ordinance.
Support.
Any more discussion? Dissension? I'd like to have the administration, please, put this in every corner, post this, so before, so everybody knows this, inside out by the 4th of July.
I'd like to bring this back to you for next reading, at the next meeting, next week, so we can get this done and get this on the books, and everybody know, get it published before the holiday season.
Exactly, thank you. Boards of Commissions?
Mr. Mayor, we had discussed, since you had requested the city clerk send out a notice to all of the existing board members requesting whether or not they wish to be reappointed. That was just done, so another week, we're going to do, wait at least a week on that.
I know, some of them just got them over the weekend. And tabled items, we have none. New business? Anyone have any new business at the mayor's, council members, Mayor Protem, anybody seeing no one? We go to Communications from Department Heads, Chief Wu-Kos. Would you like to have any comments this evening? And any other department head would like to come up? I'm going to call you anyway.
On behalf of the whole Police Department, I want to thank you very much for the resolution recognizing National Police Week. It's close to home for us here in 2002, July 28th. Jessica Nagle-Wilson died in the line of duty, so... And I wanted to thank Jennifer Emmett. She, we have this memorial display in the lobby, it's a car door that we all signed when she passed away, and Jennifer made it really nice, and that is out there now, so if you have time, go take a look at it. There's some lights on it, and it looks, it looks really good. Just wanted to say Happy Mother's Day, belated to all the mothers out there. And being a police officer, I think, is getting more challenging in these days and times, and as the resolution said, 163 officers died in the line of duty. And one thing that is starting to come to light is the mental health issues that it devolves with certain police officers, and a statistic that has become more well-known is the amount of suicide that happens in police work. And I don't know the exact number, it's like 153 or 158. It's almost the same number that are killed in line of duty that commit suicide, so it's a very challenging job, and I thank you all for recognizing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Evening.
I have a couple more things on the John R. project coming up. Orange barrels will start appearing Thursday, May 16th, with construction starting on the 20th Monday. They're going to start on the outside lanes, and they'll be working on the curbs and stuff like that. The inside lanes will stay open till they finish that, and then they'll flip over to the other way. They're going to do their best to keep all the entrances and everything open through the construction. There will be a letter going out to each business, and it will have information on them, how they can keep track of that. I do have a letter here. We did start our sidewalk replacement program, kind of kicked off today, focusing on Batel, Hazelwood, and Reynolds, with a little bit of work on the other west side of John R. We had to skip a few houses last year due to a Consumers Energy project, so those areas are a little congested right now.
While you're talking about the sidewalk, can you discuss the ways that people can pay and the cost associated with that? Because there were some questions online that were going on around about that.
Yes, so after work's completed, each homeowner will receive an invoice, and in that, there's three different ways to pay. One is, if you pay early, and it'll lump sum, you do receive, I believe it's a 5% discount. The other way is to make payments with our treasurer, kind of like you would pay your water bill. And third is to do nothing at all, and then that goes on as a lien on your taxes. There's three different choices for people to choose from. Third, I have a little information we discussed about GFL going to five days in the future, and also, residents at Hazel Park will receive a 95-gallon trash can that has gone before SACRA. We have some things to discuss with, probably tomorrow, at staff meeting, but they would like to put that before the SACRA Board meeting, June 12th. And then shooting for July 1 as a target date for starting our five-day-a-week process. Their first issue already, though, would be 4th of July week, so we would already have some bumps in the road of when we start anything. Holidays, as with anything, it usually bumps, does a little bit of something to our services, so we'll get through that.
I have a resident, her very large recycle bin has gone missing. What are the options for replacement?
Contact us at DPW, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. SACRA has a database on which number cart was at that. A lot of times, I'm able to get that number from SACRA. I give that back to the resident, and they can check and see if maybe the resident, or their neighbor accidentally has their cart. If not, we can try to replace that. Another option, we do sell recycle carts at DPW. We do have 65-gallon, which is the normal one that everybody has, and then we also have a 95-gallon, much larger one for multifamily and heavy use.
Thank you, I will let her know.
Thank you.
Your Honor, Tom, how much stuff was dropped off at the Earth Awareness Day?
Okay, at Earth Awareness Day, we had great weather this year. Basically, six pallets of electronics and about four pallets of paint, and all that was taken back to SACRA for recycling.
Outstanding.
So it was a good day.
Hot dogs were good, too.
Yeah, always good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Water Supervisor Tim Young. How are you doing this evening?
Good evening, everyone. And riding on the coattails of our Earth Awareness Day, which was very successful, I just wanted to remind everybody about the West Nile virus that has plagued Michigan for years. We've had an exorbitant amount of rain, so please, everyone, check around your yards for anything that's holding standing water that might breed mosquitoes. We'll be performing a treatment program, probably about the end of the month, we'll begin treating all of our street drains throughout the city to help cut down on a type of mosquito breeding. So if everyone could do us a favor, too, and check their yards for anything that could be holding water, tires, buckets, standing water, that they can kind of push around and let it dry up a little bit. Kind of tough with the way the weather's been going, so today, I think, is the first day anybody's actually been outside to realize they have a yard still and look around, so we can, I'll help out, it'll be a much better year.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, it takes us to our city attorney. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, before the city attorney, Jared Gageos has a...
Oh, he's hiding.
He's, Jared Gageos has a comment. And I don't know if Jeff Campbell has anything to say or not.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to make a comment about the Scout Park project that we're working on. I want to make sure and urge everyone in the community to volunteer and sign up. If you do not know, we received a grant from the Sutar Sutark Meyer Foundation for $350,000. It's a really amazing gift that we have, but we have to build Scout Park ourselves under the guidance of Leathers. They're the ones that built Booth Park in Birmingham. So I urge everyone to please fill out a volunteer form. You can get them here as a hard copy from the city manager's office, from the rec center. I believe the school has some themselves. The link is on our website under Scout Park Project on the top of the webpage. You can find it on the Facebook page, you can find it basically everywhere. So please, if you don't know how to use construction tools, we will teach you. If you don't like to do construction, you can help with food, or childcare, or whatever we may need. We need about 150 people per shift. We have three shifts per day, so that's about 450 people per day. That's five days. That's a lot of people. So let's try to get as many people as we can to this thing. So far, so good on the volunteers. We do have a lot of engagement with this, but we want to see more Hazel Park people getting involved. You can be a retiree, you can be an 18-year-old, anyone over the age of 10 can assist with this project, so, thank you. Just wanted to make that announcement.
One other thing, we are going to be feeding them lunch and dinner.
Correct, and breakfast. We will have coffee and donuts and snacks, so. And there will be childcare provided for anyone that is concerned about children under the age of 10. There will be childcare provided, so please just reach out to us, we will help you figure that out. The call-off day for childcare will be the Wednesday before we start building, I believe that's the fifth, I want to say, June 5th.
June 10th.
No, the call-off day, that Wednesday before.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So if anyone has any questions, please reach out to us. We're trying to answer as many as we can. I'm doing an email blast every Friday, just to try to keep everyone up to date. So thank you to everyone that's signed up so far. Go ahead and.
Jared, you said the call-off date for childcare. What do you really mean by that?
Yeah, so the last date to register.
To be a childcare provider, because they're all certified by?
No.
No?
Till I get your kid in, yeah.
Well, we need a little care, those without kids.
Yeah, get the little kids in. There will be an option to, if we don't reach capacity with childcare, to bring your child in, but that depends per day and the amount of people we have and such and so forth. If you do want to have your children get involved, Thursday through Saturday is the main day that we really are looking to have kids involved. That's mulching day, so we know that kids like to mulch. So that's the easiest thing for them to do. We're not giving them power tools. Anyone under the age of 18 cannot use the power tool, so bring them to mulch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank my staff for their outstanding support that they provided this project so far. I've already had so many of my department heads volunteer, and I want to recognize some members of the committee that we've had, and I'm sure that I will miss someone. But I want to recognize Jared, I want to recognize Jared Gageos and Linda Yono from my office, as well as Serene Papaki and our recreation director, who's had the point on this, Tom Jones, who's been just absolutely fantastic. Tim and Chief Buchholz also showed up to the build committee, and I'm sure they're going to be very important participants in this endeavor as well. I'd like to list a few more of the folks who've been on the committee. School Superintendent Amy Crouppie has been a great partner to us in this endeavor, as well as Amanda Klein, Amanda Taylor, Pastor Craig Brundage, Melissa Baldwin, who's been helping recruit volunteers. Our own Andy Licuro is a construction captain, so I want to thank Pastor Craig Brundage. I want to thank all these folks who have volunteered and participated, and I'm sure that I've missed a lot of names, because we had a great turnout from the business community last week at the organizational meeting. So, again, thank you to everybody. I'm humbled by the response that we have, but we need to get more volunteers so that we can complete this park on time. It will be a fantastic jewel in the city of Hazel Park, and again, I'm humbled and grateful to everybody who has volunteered to participate in this project. Everyone is welcome. We want you to participate. Thank you.
City Attorney, have any?
Yes.
That wasn't my comment. More stuff to say.
Do you have more?
Yes.
Back to you.
Okay.
Just hang on. Just want to give her a spot here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Charles Gladue, I would like to thank you for bringing this question this evening, and we appreciate, I appreciate, the Hazel Park Alliance Club. And I would also like to address the Honorable Mayor and Counsel. Enforcing our charter and ordinances is a very tough job, and you all should be commended for doing such a wonderful job. You make tough decisions all the time, and you work very, very hard, and you should be commended for so doing, and I wanted to say that tonight. Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager?
Yes, thank you. Again, volunteer for Scout Park. It's amazing, all these things we're able to do, given the fact that Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. But, talking about Police Week, Chief Buchholz is right. It's very difficult now, being a police officer, it is the toughest job in America, and I believe our police officers deserve our respect and appreciation for the tough job that they have to do every day, keeping it safe. So I thank the Council for passing this resolution, and I want to let the men and women of the Hazel Park Police Department know how much we appreciate them and commend them for the outstanding job that they are doing. Our crime rates really are at record lows. People can talk about the good old days and talk about how things were better 20, 30 years ago. The facts, the cold, hard facts, tell us something different, that Hazel Park is safer today, and I think we're safer in large part because we have great residents who look out for one another, and we also have an outstanding police department that does a fantastic job protecting us. As the mayor said, the new development at CVS has hit the papers today, and we're pleased to bring the people of Hazel Park this development. I told Fox Two News it was a wart, and it is a wart. It's an ugly building over there, and I am so glad that I will see it down finally. It has been vacant for nearly 10 years, and I'm glad that we're going to be able to bring something nice and new to the residents of Hazel Park. We've got all kinds of interest. Jeff Campbell and I meet, I think, two or three times a week with interested business owners that want to come here and are thinking about bringing something to Hazel Park. And we're trying very hard, we're trying very hard to make the development now uniform across the whole city, and we're going to redouble our efforts with that aim in mind. Memorial Day Festival, as Mayor Webb spoke of, that's coming again. Please attend the festival. It's a great time. We look forward to seeing everybody there. The Beer Tent's a fantastic place to socialize and to run into old friends, and to just meet people that you haven't seen in a while, and make some new friends. The John R. Road Repair, again, I know things are going to be congested, I know it will slow down travel, but those repairs are necessary. So I want to thank everybody. We're going to continue to bring great things to the city of Hazel Park, and I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish, and I'm very proud of my outstanding department heads who always step up and do a fantastic job. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselperson Sullivan?
I would like to tell everybody, have a safe weekend. Thank you all for coming. Doing what we do is not easy. We don't always make everybody happy, but oftentimes, our best interests are the community's best interest, and taking things out of context can be a bit hairy, but in the current political climate, it's something that we're seeing more and more often. Again, thank you all for coming. Look out for your neighbors. Get your pets vaccinated this weekend, and I hope to see people Thursday at Letito for political discussion with WDIV, or DVR. D E T, thank you.
Counselperson Holland?
Thank you all for coming out. I have quite a few things tonight. Laura, first, I'd like to congratulate you, and thank you. It's not just children that you're teaching, you are active with the parents and the community. And Andrea, you're doing amazing things in that building. Thank you both for everything you do, and please relay to your staff my appreciation. Quite a few of my neighbors are in your school, and it's wonderful to see them grow and develop and just be excited about going to school. That's half the battle. Chief, it's not just the men and women, and I'm proud to say that we have more women in the department now, it's also the home partners and what they put up with, and I'm grateful every day for the home partners that support the men and women that keep us safe, the time away from home the holidays miss. It is noted, and it is appreciated, and please let them know that as well, that we value their families as deeply as we do them and the job they provide for us here. Tom, great job at Earth Awareness Day. That was a blast. The weather cooperated this year. It was fun to not do anything in the rain. I'd also like to wish everyone a Mother's Day, and it's not just biological moms. For years, I would call my cousin, who was a single dad raising his son, and I would wish him Happy Mother's Day. And we also have a lot of people in the community that don't have children of their own, but take on a leadership role and a parental role, and I'm grateful for each and every one of you that choose to be an involved adult in someone's life. I think the Scout Park build was covered. People need to still sign up and volunteer. One last thing that I wanted to bring forward is, a few years back, folks may remember that there were scams going on with the foreclosed homes, and you see, they see it on Craigslist and come to meet somebody there, and the person who was showing the house had literally broken in the back window, was unlocking the front door, showing them the house, and giving them an opportunity to put a big chunk of money down and buy their house. And a lot of these folks were the victims of foreclosure already, so the predatory practices are still out there. I want to figure out if there's something that we can do to better educate people that are renting in this community on what the standards and conditions of the homes are supposed to be. If your landlord doesn't have a landlord license, there's probably a reason why. You deserve to have a safe house, a clean house, and a healthy house, and I want to see this tightened up. We have too many people paying a lot of money for houses that they have buckets in their kitchens and parts of the house. And it also goes to new home purchases or renovated home purchases. Strongly encourage, we have a lot of people that are first-time homebuyers that may not have a lot of experience in knowing what to look at, and paint and trim can cover up an awful lot. If you are looking at a house that's been rehabbed, please do your due diligence. Go to the building department, find out what permits have been pulled, find out the history of it. If you really want to know what was done with the remodel, talk to the neighbors around there, they will have no problem sharing all the nitty-gritty. And the same thing with new construction. We have some very reputable builders in the community, and we have some interesting things going on where I want to make sure folks know that if you are asked to put a huge chunk of money down on something, have an attorney go over it. Spend that extra money, and have an attorney review it, protect yourself. And the old mantra or motto, if it sounds too good to be true, probably is. Hold that near and dear and do your due diligence. We have got just a phenomenal group of new folks moving in here, and I want them to be part of the community and not be here a year and have to worry about either losing a house or having huge repair bills. I guess with that, I thank you all again for coming out tonight, and have a wonderful evening.
Mr. Mayor, could I follow up on something Councilwoman Holland said? I want to urge our residents to be especially careful about putting down payments on houses that have yet to be built.
Thank you.
Okay? If the house is not sitting there, and you're going to put a down payment on a house that is yet to be built and is going to be built for you the way that you want it, you need to do your due diligence and check out that builder and check out that property owner, because I'm very concerned about this particular phenomenon, the potential for this to happen in the city of Hazel Park this year. So my strong advice to you is, if this house isn't constructed, don't buy it.
Thank you.
Sound advice, thank you. Councilman Licuro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Laura and Chase, you know, these are the type of people that we have here in Hazel Park. It's part of what makes the fabric of the community so wonderful. It is the bike season, please watch out for the bicyclists. I'm one of them. You are, as a bicyclist, if you're riding at night, it is a law to have the lights on your bike. The Hazel Park Casual Biking Club meets at the high school at 7:00 on Wednesdays. We'll meet tomorrow night. And I want to thank all the volunteers that we all have, and please, we, seriously, 150 volunteers every shift. This is going to be a huge thing, but it's going to be historical. This piece, this park will stand for decades, and it's going to be an exciting thing to be part of. If you have children, tell them you love them. If you love somebody, tell them every day you love them, and hope to see you all out on Memorial Day weekend. Have a safe and happy Memorial Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Temp?
As usual, I'm very excited when I see all of these seats filled. We have a really good, diverse crowd out there that's not just staff. A lot of people came out for public comment, speak your voice, that's what we're here for. We've received donations from Eagle Scouts, so congratulations, that is quite the feat. My brother was a Boy Scout, never quite made it to Eagle Scout. So just really happy to see everybody here participating in the democratic process, and that.
Thank you. I thank everybody for coming out this evening. It's been a, I guess it's so fulfilling, you mean, actually, I kind of think we covered every topic out there. I'd just say thank you to the police officers again, and thank them downstairs and all your staff for their commitment to our community. I'd say thank you to also to all the employees, DPW, Water Department, Fire Department, and staff here, for their commitment for coming to work and giving their time, and extra time if they do, that they don't get paid for sometimes, that they spend an extra few hours here. And I'd like to say thank you, Laura, congratulations one more time, and to Mr. Chase, thank you. And it's nice to see a young person take initiative and show that they care about where they live, as well as others. And I think that just speaks volumes. With that, is there an exec session?
No exec session today, but I will be contacting each and every one of you and showing you guys, sharing with you some legal opinions that we found in the past regarding boards and commissions and appointments and things like that, so they will make sure that they are in your LL files. I may try to get them to you earlier. And also, I want to recognize Lacey Christensen for the great work that she has been doing. She got the budget done. She's had to do the MIDC budget, it was dropped in her lap. She has had her share of being busy this year. She's been my wonderful partner with respect to the road project and the bond issue and all of the things that went with that, so she's earned her nickels this week, and I want to recognize and thank her for her work.
Move to adjourn?
Support.
Discussion about adjourned? Have a good evening.